Choosing them and maybe what you undo. So I'll keep going and you stop along the way.
All right. Do you want questions as you're going?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we talked about this last time. So, um, and this is a new slide. I just wanted to put so part of what the board has asked is that we get on the one pay grid. If every, if all the stars align and part of that would be for HHS to come over and with their structure, these are positions that um, would be proposed a career ladder to be approved later, but they may be implemented. As the board approves. So I just wanted to put that out. So in addition to moving HHS over, we looked at all of their job descriptions, scored them. So we could bring them into the pay grid and also looked at a career ladder. So what a career ladder does is basically says, a lot of these physicians have multiple. Employees in them. So it allows them a growth to grow in place. So you could start in less experience, less competent and kind of grow in there. Um, some of these you'll see are the ones that are harder to recruit for and retain. So that allows them to kind of grow in place. So, this is something that HHS is working on to um, help their employees. Once they come here, kind of grow into that. So I just wanted to put that in. That you will all see at a later date, but I just wanted to put that that is kind of um, in the works of how this works as well. Does that make sense? Um, what we're showing with the classifications of each position are only proposed. So um, project team has looked at them. So my next recommendation would be that it goes Scott can talk to the management team and kind of see, are we missing something? Does it line up and kind of, and then go to the employees? So they're not final. Boys and supervisors um, review and then can appeal those classifications. Um, it should be noted that you as an employee can't just do that. It has to have your supervisor and department head signature so that it's all in alignment. And so these are the classifications. I know this was out before. So you've all seen it. It looks very small on there. Um, but basically what it does is it moves every single position in the county into one pay grid. So the title is on the left, the grade is on the right. And how are those determined? Maybe the question next is again, it's by the job descriptions and the pay equity points. So we are doing a lot with this movement into the pay grid. So we're trying to take your old structure and move it in. We're taking HHS and putting them in. So it's been a lot of review of this. Um, but these are the classifications and again, they're not final. Um, but we just wanted the board to kind of think hierarchically how positions are fitting in. And then when you see the pay grid, you can say, oh, this is what this means for this position. So I just wanted the board to have that. So they could get an estimate of what it means. Nothing's final. We still have time to work on any changes that maybe need to be made.
Is this using the hay study or the hay?
Hay system. Yep.
The hay system for ranking. We haven't changed.
Nope.
To a different system. Okay.
Nope. And it's, I mean, it's a system the state uses. So it's a good system. It's been around for a long time. Um, there are multiple versions of it. I will say that. So not every county uses it the same way. Um, so it is a good way to look at them though, because what it does is it looks at what is needed for the job, not the position. So it looks at education, experience, certification, accountability, problem solving, and then it actually goes right into budget like size of budget and like impact of end results. So it was created, I think in the eighties and it just kind of has been changed a little bit, but a lot of entities still use it.
So you said counties kind of massage it to fit what something.
Counties haven't, the hay system itself has been modified by the state. So when it originally came out, it was really built for large organizations for the private sector. And then when it kind of went into the public sector, they kind of did a modification. So you guys are actually on the original one. So, and you're not the only county though. It is nice though, because it separates. I know some people will say, well, how does it impact? It actually looks at the size of the budget when it's looking at those impact of end results. So it's a nice measurement that we can actually tangibly measure. Yeah.
Um, so you, you use the hay study points and pay equity points. You didn't use anything from a market basis.
Not to get these points. No. So.
These are the points you're presenting to us to move these job descriptions onto.
Into the pay grid, which also looks at the market. So I would say first of all, you look at the job description.
Yeah.
And because of pay equity, you use the hay system. That's your classification system. I scored them. So even if you went to, everyone's going to get paid the same. This is how it would rate them. The pay grids.
Keep putting pay equity into it.
Yep. The pay grids that you're going to see, those are then calibrated per the market data and per the board's direction. So again, the pay grid can change. These will not unless we miss something and we have like a classification or we say, hey, this should be here. But overall, that's kind of how they're.
Give us an example of what portion is. So I'll throw a couple of detention deputies, highway equipment operator and our uh, appraisers, three of the probably common ones you have problems with.
Yep.
Were they adjusted based on market?
You can't adjust the pace. You can't adjust the point points. You can't adjust the point used to determine which, which reins they fit in. Just because of that one, then you can't compare anything across counties because now each of them is just putting people wherever they want to put people.
I think what you're asking though is by putting them in this, this grade and the new grid, does that adjust them to a competitive market pay? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. I would say option one does that.
Okay.
Um, option two, probably a little slightly less, just because you want your, you chose to be slightly less competitive to the market. So it does do both. You have to do this first and then you put them into that grid.
Do you have that information provided to us about the market comparisons?
Like the, the raw data from each of the entities or?
So we can look, you can show us detention deputy on this pay grid.
Yep.
Is compared to what county wide. And again, we don't say we don't use Dakota County, but we have to. Same with an appraiser. Uh, we use a, so you're going to show that. So where it fit into, because I have a feeling in another year, they're going to say, we can't hire appraisers. There are two of them left again because they went to Dakota.
Sure.
They will, we just spent $30,000, a million dollars to upgrade a pay grid and we're still losing people. Uh, highway equipment operators. I'm guessing Jeff is probably going to tell me next year, we're still trying to hire people because the two people he called said they can go work for another five bucks more an hour, but you're saying. And then I just, my concern is you're going to come to us or Brad or other people are going to say, we can't do that because pay equity says. So now we got it. So my concern is, are we not, are we bumping? Classifications up based on markets, try to get it up where if you look at everybody, I'll hire equipment operator, legal secretary, detention deputies, admin account assistant. Are they justifiably getting paid what they are? Are they hired just because of pay equity points? So we had to move them because of the equipment operator? You know, so are we paying more people, people more than what the market would say you need to be paid just because we have to stay within equity points?
Yeah. Not everyone is going to be treated the same because if you're in a grade of 10 people, the market is going to have like 10 different positions. It might be a little bit different, but the grade is calibrated per the board's direction of where they want to be to the market. You guys set that by saying we'd like two options. So then I try to get each job in there. You in the public sector, you cannot pay each position just to the market. That's where you get in trouble with pay equity. Cause it would say the highway.
Gotcha. What I'm trying to get to a point is that we had a conversation last time. I guess I'd just like a consensus from the board. If you're going to continue to let our pay grid be controlled by pay equity. Just in honesty, let me know. Cause I feel like I'm just wasting my time listening to all this stuff because pay equity doesn't work in the real world. It, you know, does it really work in other counties? Because we sit here comparing to Dakota County and we're trying to figure out how they do it. It's also meet pay equity compliance too.
Yeah. And I wouldn't.
You know, and so either you got to adjust it, but it just, I get it. And like I said, if we can get it, if you guys can give me consensus and say your focus is going to be, we have to maintain pay equity and that's the way the world works. I can go on with my life, you know, and not even bring up these conversations because I think it's a joke of how it all involves. And I get that that's want to be their focus, but then I cannot ask these questions. And I say, the rest of the board wants to have pay equity as their focus. And I can simplify my time. So I just want a consensus from the fellow members of the board that you're just going to adjust everybody evenly. Everybody's treated the same. You get your point system. You can, our appraisers can go to Dakota County or higher equipment. We can't hire equipment. Operators, detention deputies can leave because they're at the same as a legal secretary and everybody's paid. So it just, if I get that consensus or that feeling from the board, I just want it from you guys. I can be quiet. I can go about this rest of the meeting and be gone because honestly, I just feel like I'm spinning my wheels here. And we're worried about who's a man, who's a woman and how you feel treated the same. And you're not because a highway equipment operator on here is not a legal secretary, not a detention deputy and vice versa. They're not. But because the hay study, somebody subjectively went through these points. So this is where you're at. Same, little ridiculous. Please give me the consensus from the board. Nothing from Tessa, nothing from Scott. I want your guys' opinion. So I can be done.
By law, we have to abide by the equity points though, do we not?
Mm hmm.
Now, if I remember correctly, it is pass fail though. The points, I think it could be down to like 80 or something.
You have to have 80% or higher to pass.
Right. But it is just pass fail.
Yep.
But we are required by law to abide by it.
Right. But in your old system, you were maybe passing by 0.5%. I mean, it was and all it takes is one person to leave. And that could mess all that up. You know what I mean? And you hire different or?
Let me be ignorant for the moment. What if the day we did, we did the pay equity, Scott identified himself as either gender neutral or female? How would that affect pay equity? Because according to the state, gender's neutral. So one person, one person at the top, where does that put us? That's how ridiculous the pay equity system is. And anybody you know, most of the counties, everybody says it's ridiculous. I mean, but I know it's a law and I get, I say you want to do it, but I'm just saying for the aspect of me having to understand this whole system and put people in and not wasting the time listening to department heads. I'll say wasting the time, but they're having trouble hiring people. It's just, it's all shoved in and say, we can't, we can't do this. Pay equity says we can't. Pay chart says we can't. So if that's going to be our focus, you guys just got to tell me that the law says this, this is the way we're going. Oh.
Well, I don't think we get to break the law. Um, and we have some wiggle room as far as the 80% is concerned and we do. I, I think ideally we would have wanted to raise the pay of the places that we're having difficulty hiring people and not raise everybody's pay, I think ideally. But I think the choice we have is this equity system. And then deciding, do we want to be second? Do we want to be third? Do we want to be fourth? But I don't think we have the ability to pay two people who are on the same um, number, 105, 110, whatever it is, different salaries. I don't think.
No. I mean, I, it, so just to answer, every county has to do it. So every county is paying the same way. So even if you don't think a legal secretary is equal to that, if it points out, that's where it is. These aren't final. If you're adamant that we should pay separately for those, then we'd have to readjust the grid. Like we did the last time and kind of created one in between and we just have to make sure the points aligned to that.
Can you, maybe I should be more clear. Do the other folks here understand the hay system and how these points are arrived at? Subjectively by test.
Well, I'm not an employee of the hay system. So no, I personally do not understand to the degree that people that work for the hay system would. I do understand that we have to abide by it. Therefore, that's the direction I would go.
I get it. But if you, if you have trouble understanding, if we don't know how we arrive at these points, you can maybe look at the system and wonder.
I think it's not the county that individually assigns the points. Maybe it is. I think there used to be a comparable worth committee at one point that maybe did that, but.
Way back.
Yeah, yeah. But it's that they, I mean, we're following the points that are set out in this system.
Yeah.
And Tessa's company identifies the points.
Well, if you don't like me doing it.
I don't, I don't like you. I'm just saying that when.
There's a.
When we started this, how long ago, I tried to get this information, try to look at it when I was dealing with this with Melissa. In honest, absolutely no sense. She couldn't describe it to me. Tried to communicate with you, tried to get it. Nobody could identify how these points are, are identified. And to me, that's why I say, it seems completely wholly uh, subjective to whatever, however you find it. I get it that you might have a baseline that you used to establish this, but again, I've always been proponent of saying we have to have the market influence. And that's why I'm just, I, I get where we're headed here. You guys are saying it's a law. You want to follow it? That's what you want? The pay grid? Good to go? Let's roll on with the rest of it. So I don't need any more communication from anybody. I got what you.
One other question, but so you know how we, you should compare Goodview County men and max to the other counties. And in some jobs, we were higher and some jobs lower. But how could that have been that way if the pay system or the hay system was being followed? Meaning how could we be overpaying in some jobs and underpaying in others if the hay system was being?
So again, the hay system doesn't care how the market is because the hay system doesn't care if you use 10 counties or no counties. It only looks at internal equity. So when your pay system was created way back when or readjusted, that's where it gets out of line. That's why you have to look at it every year to see where is the industry going? What are changes that are being needed? Uh, to your point, Commissioner, if you want, if you're concerned, that's why you create those career letters. So you can continue to grow those people and pay them where they need to be in the market. So they can come in, start, or because they have experience or whatever, you can kind of grow them in place. It's not unheard of even for detention deputies to have a one and a two right now. It's almost like the three year mark where people start saying, what now? So you can do that. Um, but to your question, the hay system only looks at internal equity to say these jobs are similar.
My question was this, how could we be above on some and below on others with minimum and max if we were following?
Because the hay system doesn't look at the market. So that looks at the market. Your pay grid is calibrated by the market and the board's goal of where they want to be.
But this was looking at other counties, I think.
Yeah. And that's your pay grid, but pay equity doesn't, it only looks at Goodview County. It doesn't look at any other. That's where I think your frustration is and the world's frustration is, is because it is supposed to be the same, but then when you have market competitive, if one county pays higher, it skews everything. If it were all equal, you'd have one pay grid for the whole state.
But if, if they paid higher for a certain job, wouldn't they have to pay higher for everything?
They do though.
I see. I see.
Yeah. So I mean, it's a common theme. Like if you looked at the raw data, you'd have some counties that pay higher than you, and you're going to have some that pay lower because their market competitiveness decision by the board is lower than that. Or they use different benchmarks and they're right where they want to be.
They have different benchmarks. Yes.
Well, first, yes, I took an oath of office. So yes, I'm going to follow the law. Law says we have to follow. You know, pay equity. Um, when I look at how we score people in the hay study, I do not think that's subjective. I think there are certain points for certain tasks. That's very objective. If you start manipulating that, that's where the subjective part comes in. If you start manipulating that scoring system for the, the points for a job, now you're manipulating the system and that's subjective. That's not objective.
Well, but, but I think Jason's right that it doesn't take into account the market. So if there's a.
But it's not supposed to. This parts, the point system for jobs is not supposed to look at the market.
Right. I understand that.
What, what you're pointing to with your graph.
Mm hmm.
Um, if you go to our graph or the pace pay grid, maybe in some counties, they do not do 4% all the way across top. They do not do the same percentage going down. Maybe at some point they jump. So that may make a job in a different county go higher because they had a bigger jump in that percentage between grades or between steps. Which then would affect that.
Right.
So that's, that's totally separate from what Tessa's talking about with the point system to score jobs, which is very objective, not subjective. And then the decision is how do you want to use that? When you put your pay grid out and then the pay grid has to meet the equity. So it's really two separate jobs. One is to get the points for the jobs right. That, that is about getting job description is accurate, scoring jobs descriptions accurate, very objective. Then you get to the subjective part, which is the pay grid. And you can manipulate the pay grid however you want in accounting, as long as in the end you meet pay equity.
I understand what you're saying.
I was just going to add though, if you didn't like my scoring this state match is use is the hay system and you could literally look up positions.
I totally understand that. Where you get the numbers and all match for all the baseline, we do, everybody talking about, Jason never said that's in order of the law. So, but maybe Mr. Keep could say, how many laws are pass fail? And as long as you're within 80%, so I'm drunk driving, you know, I either pass or fail, but if I'm what they need for instance. So while I'm in a panic, oh, we got to follow law. Yeah. Okay. Nobody said ever said not pass the law, but I don't know how any laws say, well, you're only going to get checked every three years. So long as you're within 80%, you're okay. So I get that pay equity focus. I can get what it is. Okay.
There's leniency.
Want to have, exactly. There's leniency.
So that county's.
Just bringing forward. So please, department heads. If you have an issue with people being hired or Jess, I'm not the one to come to. Don't ask me. When you say you can't hire an equipment technician because they can get $35 an hour instead of 28 it is hiring here. Because pay equity won't let us pay him anymore. I'm just trying, you know, we have these issues coming forth and I'm just saying, I, and I know pay equity. I talked about this the last night. If we just bundled up pay equity, put it aside and look at what we need to do to get our pay, pay grade and our people in a reasonable set, where does that put us? But they don't, nobody wants to go aside. You, pay equity is still going to be the focal point of what you do. The point system is still the focal point of what you're going to do. I get it. We're past that point. I'm fine.
But I would say pay equity would say you could pay Homestead wages and they could care less as long as you have your points and your classification consistently.
The problem is saying that again, an equipment operator is not the same as a legal secretary, not the same as detention deputy. They're not the same. I'm just saying they don't. In my world, they don't.
So maybe you should do some classification appeals, then you and I can work together on the job description.
From a point standpoint, you say, they say they're the same. And that's what I tried to express is that I've looked at how they did, did, did it. Put these points in it and I, I get it. I don't understand, but I'm, no, we're good.
I don't think the difference is that Tessa says the same.
No.
The hay system, point structure says they're the same.
So you can take a job description and know it and identify how the points came up with.
Yeah. It's all based on, it's all based on what they do. It's all the tasks, all the, all based on how many dollars they affect. It's all based on all. It's very objective, the way that's done. It is not, oh, I like this person or I want to bump this person. That's not how it's done at all. It is all very objective. That's why it's really important. The job descriptions are accurate. They don't have more than a person does. And they don't have less than a person does.
And it's all cut and dry. So.
So this grid is option one. So it is different than the one that was first presented in May. Um, Commissioner Gersoff asked that I condense some of the percentages between the grades. So a grade again is on the left hand side. So like a percent between a 118 and 119, you wanted to see more consistent. In doing that, we can leave it at this, or you could add more grades in there to get the same result as that one. I didn't because I just list, I did what he said. So again, there's room in how this looks too. But I would say this option achieves what the board asked for to address the issues of public health nurses, the detention deputies, the equipment operators, where it gives them a larger weight range to their max. So it increases their max. Um, it moves everybody onto one grid. So it moves HHS on and it adjusts for 87 through 91 that weren't adjusted last time.
The numbers on the top in the yellow, the 80, 84, so it went 4% across the board all the way up. Is, are those numbers that can be manipulated? So it could be a larger step um, percentage at the bottom to hopefully encourage people to come in, but maybe 2% on the top steps. So.
Or the opposite, you have a minimum that's competitive and you want to reward your tenure employees. So you could change that. Um, that's what some will do. So maybe it'll be like four, 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 five and six. Your old grid had department heads where they had a larger percent at the max to retain them. So you can change that. Those are the percentages. Basically, these are the percentages between right steps. That's how people move through the system. These are the grades and those percentages are to calibrate your grid where the board's desire is to be in relation to the market you chose. But yeah, you could definitely adjust that. And then well, so your grid, the way it works is it starts here. That's why that 23 is yellow and it goes both ways. That's kind of a part that when you adjust the grid, that's where you would just keep going down. But yeah, you could say if you want higher steps here in the beginning, or we want higher. Again, I always say that the market tells you where you are to the market, but the board decides how competitive you want to be. And I would say how fast you get there. So changing the percentages um, will give people more room to grow. Adding more steps would give people more room to grow. Do you know what I mean? You could cut it down and say we want 6%, but then you have a 6% increase with a cola every year.
And is option one basically putting us at number two behind the?
It puts you about right at the, like in the third, not every single position, um, but in the top.
I meant option one, I meant.
Yeah. Option one. Yep.
Option one puts us in the second spot?
I would say third. Right in there. Um, so you have Homestead and Rice would be above you.
Okay. And what does option two put us in?
It does, but not as competitively. So.
Same place. It puts us in the third.
It does, but not as competitively. So right now, where you were, you were about 11% above market. If you move to option one, you go to about 20%, so a 9% increase. If you go to option two, it's only a 5% increase. So you're not adjusting everything.
16% to me.
Yeah. 5% above 11. So 16. Yeah. So the issue I think you're going to see in both of these is option one, I think does everything that the board asked for. Everyone moves into the system. They would get a, everyone gets a bump this year. Would some max out? Yes. So if your desire is, we don't want anyone to max out, then we need to recalibrate this. Part of that is, is because they're coming in, they're highly paid. You have some people that are going to be coming in at step one because they were below market. So the board has to kind of decide of how you move people in and what matters. So the people that are maxed out would have been maxed out in your current system. They get a bump this year. And then they're maxed out and continue getting their colas like they would. It's not every single one, but you have a large percent right now because you are a great place to work. People stay here. Or you pay them at the top right away. One of the two. So people are maxed out now. This corrects it for all positions. There are still a handful that after 2023, if you implement it, would not have room to grow.
But at some point that's going to happen.
It's going to happen.
Many places.
And I would say.
Tap out and they get a cola.
As.
And it's because they were already competitive.
Right. And the whole point of, I mean, I, I'm just going to play devil's advocate. I know people aren't going to like. The whole point of this is that you are at step 12 and you're maxed out. You're probably a tenured employee. And when the grid adjusts to the market, you keep growing with the market. If it were a perfect world and market was competitive and everything, you would never come off the grid. You would always stay on step 12 because every year you move 3% cola or whatever, you would stay on that step. So you continue to move as the grid. It doesn't work that way in the market because right as you're doing this, other entities are doing it and changing it too. So will this be a perfect fix? No. Um, but will it get you closer and address some of your issues this year? Yes.
And I, I, I kind of understood the main priorities were to improve the salaries at the bottom end, improve the salaries for supervisors and.
Yeah. So there'll be less compression. Yep.
Right. That was my understanding and, and my understanding wasn't that the goal was to give everybody a raise, but maybe I misunderstood that.
I think it was to get everybody on the grid.
On the grid. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Only option one does that.
Yeah.
Option two does not get everybody on the grid. There's a whole list of people.
Yep.
You mean, because they're already above the grid?
They would be above the grid.
They would have to stay put until the grid caught up with them basically.
Right. They don't lose money. So when someone says we're taking money away, we are not taking money away from anyone. It just means that they're maxed out. Like they would have been in the old system until the grid.
And, but the reason they're maxed out is because they were already paid at that 16% above market.
It means that they're at the top of the grid.
They're at the top of the grid.
Far enough to keep them in the grid.
But yeah.
But is that second grid not sixteen percent above market?
It is calibrated at sixteen percent, but you have to realize when I calibrated, I have to adjust to your goals. And the first goal was to fix the top and to move HHS in and the eighty seven into ninety one into one grid. When you become less competitive, your maxes go down. So people that were maxed out will stay maxed out. Where this one allows some growth and. If you, everyone wins a lottery and you hire tomorrow, you have a more market competitive salary. In option one, then you do an option.
I think maybe part of the confusion is when we say that the grid is adjusted to sixteen percent over. That doesn't mean every single job is sixteen percent over. That means the average.
Right. Absolutely.
Be. So, so if you say that they're already paid on a hundred and sixteen percent, that's not accurate. Because they may, might not be.
Right.
They're just at the top of the grid and we didn't move the grid in that area far.
Right.
To get them back up. So the percentage that, when you talk percentages, they never ever. To me, it always gets muddy, but you can't assume that everybody's moving sixteen percent or twenty percent.
No, I don't.
Or eleven percent.
They're moving. I'm saying that if you compared where we were at to the other eleven counties at each of these. You know, classifications, we'd be sixteen percent above the mean, I think, is what it is.
The average, yeah. And right now you're eleven, so you make a five percent bump.
But you're right. You were saying.
But it's not.
Already sixteen percent over and that's not accurate.
But I think if they're already, if people are significantly under, their adjustment is greater. Than if they're close to what that number would be. So I, I, I believe that at the top of our pay grid, the. Numbers were relatively higher and at the bottom of our pay grid, the numbers were relatively lower. And so that our problem was more on the lower end than on the high end. That, that's the way I understood it. And Lida, I don't know if that's how you understood it or not, but.
The way. I understood it. So is that where we.
Yeah, no. And I, and part of the reason for that is the top end of the scale. Like I said before, how you look at these.
I can't. Maybe I better. I think so. I, I can't see.
I do better at explaining.
That's all right. That's all right. Right. It's better if I can see it.
If someone's looking in, I'm sorry, I'm not.
Oh, you're good.
You're on that. But basically, so I'm just gonna say like maybe this part of your gold grid, this is not your old grid, but I'm just trying to show. They had a higher wage range from here to here. So I would say those jobs were maintaining. A better market competitive pay than these upper jobs were. The entry level to mid management level jobs were because of how it was. When we pushed them into one. Everyone now has the same. So it's going to ill impact these um. Grades down here or the higher, however you look at the higher grades or whatever, it's gonna ill impact that. That's why option one addresses that still rewards, still tries to compete market competitiveness. Is it gonna re, you know, create a retention? That I don't know. I mean, it does give them a bump. Um, maybe it's not the same as everybody else, but it's because again, their wagering was bigger. So they had a larger room to grow and now everyone is at the same one. I told Scott very early this morning, if I knew where we were gonna be today, I would say. Don't try to recalibrate, just start over from scratch and require the board to do it all in one year. Because every time you adjust it a little bit, it impacts everyone. It has a snowball effect. And when we do parts and pieces, it benefits and causes disadvantages. So. Not everyone is getting treated equal all the time. And so there's all of these. I would even say in a perfect world, if I created one, not everyone's gonna get the same increase. You shouldn't. If you're not getting a big increase or a lot more steps, that means you're market competitive. You can argue the data with me, but you're, you're fairly competitive to the market. Um, now with that said, with retention and recruitment, it may not be enough. That's why option one addresses that into some concerns, maybe not enough. Maybe you need to look at these um jobs down here a little bit more and create. Either go back to the wage, larger wage spread for those or increase those um steps in between those.
The, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and Tessa subtly said this twice, but the, the difference between the early bay grid and now. When you've compressed the uh groupings, it's actually pushed a few people uh that will end up over this new grid. Which I think we didn't. I think one of the goals the board had was to keep everybody within the grid. And this new, this new version of option one actually pushes some over the grid.
Well, option one, they're in the grid this year, but they're temporary. Option two.
Not a thing at three percent.
I'm not gonna argue that, but you're giving them a three percent before you're moving them into the grid. So either. If you don't wanna do it that way, then let's just adjust this by three percent. And then everyone would have room to grow. It's because of the implementation, like we cre- recalibrated it here, they would go in. You can say that maybe it's not competitive, then that's where we can say, well, is a classification right? Should maybe some of these be moved or should we change the percentage between? This isn't final, but this was the two options that the board had asked for.
Go ahead.
Well, I, um, I really believe we should pay people as well as we can afford. I guess what concerns me is when we're fourth in population, when we're fourth in income, when we're third in growth. Um, what is it that we can really afford? And so it's not that I don't wanna pay people well, but I wanna make sure that we're living within a reasonable budget. So that's, that's where.
And I think that is one of our. Other large concerns is that, of course, we wanna pay people enough money to be able to live here. And we have to figure out how to pay for it. So the, and where we, we have difficulty in recruitment, so therefore. Back when Commissioner Drodos was here, that was the direction we were looking is how to bring up the bottom. And possibly where is it that we start losing people between the fourth and fifth year, fifth and sixth? I mean, how do we retain and keep them? Could we have a bump there? And remembering back, I think many of us questioned whether or not we really needed to lift the upper. Um, positions at the same rate. Because yes, at some point you're gonna tap out in a job. But if you've been here fifteen, twenty years, I mean, most people don't leave after fifteen, twenty years. That doesn't seem to be where the biggest problem was.
Um, I, I don't know your retention.
I think it's true that it's at the lowest uh, at the earliest steps. I think that that's true is where the biggest.
Right. As opposed to the hard to recruit positions that even where you're. Yeah, like you're. Not able to have anyone in the applicant pool or they're still not gonna be.
That's pay, but part of that is just the whole workforce issues.
Oh, sure. For sure.
Right. Or I was stealing from everybody. I mean, we're stealing from each other. All right. Do, yes.
So. And that, it, it quite frankly, that's why I wanted to go with this longer term contract with DDA. Is to, you know, we implement something, now we're gonna review and say, okay, what's working, what's not working? How do we adjust going forward? Rather than try to. Administer something like this and then walk away for five years and then come back and it's.
No, I think we've made a.
So I think, I think, well, all of us want this to be perfect. I'm, I, I've been convinced since the beginning, this, we'll never have it perfect. And that's why we need to adopt something and then move on. To find out where the problems in this are every year and figure out. If we need to make adjustments or if we have to stay with what we're at. And I'll tell you, one of my, at the very beginning, it was to make sure. Especially when we move people onto this pay grid. That were on numeric system, that they aren't automatically off the top. And I, I, that would make, that would be a, a no vote for me. So I, I'm inclined to think we need to make sure that we get. Everybody on the grid now and then in a year we'll be looking at it. And say, okay, so this is what's happening. Now what? Because the market will change in a year, the market will change in six months. It's just, it's the way it is. So.
And I would say, I mean, the biggest concern I hear. Besides pay equity is how do you pay for it? And I think in option one, you know. They already looked at it to say, we have the funding in the budget to pay for option one. With that said, to Scott's point, if we wanna truly give everyone a three percent and put them onto the grid. Then we would have to adjust that a little bit and I could run a number, what that would cost and would they have the money to do that?
So. Everybody that we put on the grid so far are not this grid, but the other grid. They got three percent when they did that.
That, that's how you guys implemented. I would say you gave three percent and then you put them on the grid.
Right. We gave whatever the general adjustment is. I just wanna clarify that. Two years ago, the general adjustment was two point two five. So those, those people moved on it with two point two five.
They, they got that.
They got whatever the general adjustment was to move on to the grid.
And, and so. Right or wrong, my feeling is now. The people who haven't gotten moved on the grid should get that adjustment when they move on the grid. The people who are already on the grid should probably just get the just, just get moved on the grid. That's my, my personal opinion. Otherwise we're. I'll use the word double dipping. I don't really think that's a right word, but.
No, I know.
I just don't think that's fair.
Yep.
First, they had to wait longer to get on the grid and second, then people who already got on. Are gonna get an extra. I just have a problem with that.
And that would reduce. I mean, the overall cost, if that's the board said, yeah, and then that would give you again, to Scott's point, to make sure everyone is truly on the grid. That way we could have, we could do it. So.
The, just so we're clear and. Andrea will keep me honest, Scott will keep me honest, whoever else knows the numbers will keep me honest. When we got the savings on health insurance, to my understanding. Um. There was about one point six to one point seven million dollars to implement a pay study. At that time, some of it was savings from the health insurance, some of it was dollars we were gonna have in. Um, just general adjustment that year. And of that, we still have a, a million fifty. Yeah, yeah. So we, and that will, that will bring people on and that will cover that cost of that salary for a year. That increase in salary for a year. And that's still sitting. So really to implement this, it's not, at this time, it's not new levy dollars. Going forward. It will be levy dollars to this new, but no matter what. Of that is gonna be there whether we do it or we don't do it. We're still gonna have that increase.
So, so a couple of questions. One is maybe it's levy dollars, but we are getting a lot more in the county program eight.
Well, yeah.
Also, we're getting a lot from the shift in how probation is paid. So it wouldn't necessarily be levy dollars. It's budget dollars.
Budget dollars, yeah.
And you had numbers on the total cost and is that the annual cost? So on like option one, the total cost with the anniversary date was nine hundred and fifty six thousand. Is that the annual cost?
That's, that's the implementation cost for July first through December thirty first this year.
So the annual cost of doing it first, it would be more like two million a year then. Is that correct?
Well, no, because once you move on the grid, you don't have that implementation cost. Then you're gonna just be treated as a normal year where you would get a step and a cola increase. Um, I, I get where you're coming from. Like it looks like, oh, then we're gonna double. No, because. We have to put people on that are floating in between steps, people that maybe are way under. So that there's a cost to do that. So this is for um. July first cost, so half of your year cost. To your point, yeah, you're going to experience some payroll. Because if Scott was maxed out and now he has one or two more steps, that will be a cost. I'll play devil's advocate. If you don't do this, you're gonna have the same costs, but in a different way. You're gonna have overtime for some positions. You're gonna have consulting or whatever to fill those. Do you know what I mean? Or just be in the training ground and letting everyone go. So I, I would say in my experience, it's hard to say. That if we didn't do this, we would have saved because I don't think you would save money because you're gonna pay overtime.
My question is, so if we were gonna be budgeting for twenty twenty four. And everybody moved on to this grid July eighth, I'm trying to understand what the increase. In the budget would be for twenty twenty four.
Sure. And if you, if you agree to an option or at least let us figure that, I could literally say, this is what it would have been, did nothing. This is what it would have been. After, you know what I mean? After the implementation, what is that cost? Because this cost that you see here. I'm just gonna say that's this year, one time cost, cause that moves you on to the grid. So in your mind, what do you wanna see is if we didn't do anything, what would our payroll be next year? Moving to this grid, how does that impact that? That is an apples to apples comparison to me. We don't wanna include this every time, cause we've paid for it.
Right. So I'm just trying to figure out how much it would be increasing it, so I can figure out if we can pay for it or not. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
And you're saying we're gonna pay for it one way or another.
Um, and I would say if you just, if you agree to one of the options, then we can get all of those numbers for you to make a final. Report to make a final, like, yep, this is how we're going to do it. But right now you have two options, maybe a third now. Do you know what I mean? So it's hard for me to give.
I might be a little naive, but it feels a little like if I'm trying to buy a car and people aren't telling you what it's gonna cost, it's hard for me to sign and say I'm gonna buy the car.
No, but, but you have to remember. Nobody's on this pay grid. Nobody is on a twenty four, twenty force um.
What?
Different. Nobody's on here. I mean, they're on that other grid. So to go to all the work to put everybody into here, figure it out. Or to do it on option two or whatever. We need to give some direction so that they aren't spinning their wheels and coming back with something that we say, no, that's not exactly what I want.
No.
I, I, I think I could simplify this a little bit. What, for, to hea- to help Tessa, like as an example. Do you want everybody within the top and the bottom of the grid? If that answers, yes, that tells Tessa something. Uh, do you want people that have already been given the general adjustment to get another general adjustment to go on the grid? I think what I was hearing is no, if that's consensus, that helps her. Do you want those that haven't moved on to get the general adjustment and then move on? That tells her something. Those three questions right there, those are answered. She can come back, she'll, this number will be a little different. Actually, it'll be less. And then in general, we can, we already know that our contracts are settled at three percent next year. We can figure that out for you. Um, and then, then it's just a matter of who's eligible for steps and who's isn't. But those, those other three questions, if we get consensus on those, Tessa can go to work.
All right. To yours about if you got the adjustment before. Would the consensus be that we don't wanna do it again when you move on the grid? Um. You said it much better, but at any rate, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Basically, it's HHS and eighty seven to ninety one. Is that right?
That haven't moved on.
That haven't moved on.
Right. So.
They would get the, they would get the adjustment when they move on, like the others got the adjustment when they moved on to that other paper.
Does that work for you?
Sure.
Does that work for you? All right. You have consensus on that one. All right. Next question.
Do you want everybody within the top and bottom of the grid?
I don't think I understand what you're.
You want people to be underneath or, or above it?
Option one gets everybody on the grid. Option two does not get everybody on the grid.
With a tweak on option one, it gets you there.
Yep.
Because you're doing the three percent. So I mean, one way we could have done it is adjusted the whole grid by three percent and did it that way.
It wouldn't take much of a tweak to do it. And I'm assuming the answer is yes.
I want everybody on the grid.
You, you should be for pay equity. So.
All right. Well, I wanna get through this this year, so I want everyone on the grids. Um. That being said, I'm not a hundred percent sure that we can afford to get HHS on the grid this year.
Oh, I, I mean.
That's my opinion, but.
No, cause their costs are in here.
So this implementation, like even if we did adjustments, I mean, it shows what HHS cost would be without anniversary date. With the anniversary date, I already sent it to HHS, so they know that number. And there wasn't a red flag, like, no, we can't do this this year. So they're fine, but to your point, now that we have direction, we can say, this is what. Modified this version, what it will cost in twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, moving ahead with a new grid, whatever that looks like, will cost X. If the county did nothing different and Tessa just shut up the whole year.
Nobody else leaves.
It would be X and we can show what that difference is. I'm just gonna say with that number, it, I don't know what it would be, but you have to account for loss of people, overtime and whatever. Because if you have a detention deputy out, you still have to have someone filling in that position and that's. And that's overtime and that's one point five times what you're paying.
Right.
And the only real, I mean, the real change is the difference between what we're paying an employee now. And what they're at on the new grid and then take that times the percent of increase. So it's not like you're, you can't take their whole wage. You only take that little bit of adjustment, which in the end. Is not. The biggest part is the from there down, what they're already getting paid is where the biggest cost going forward is. That little bit the adjusting isn't the biggest cost.
But uh, nine hundred fifty six thousand is a two percent levy increase of what all went on levy. So one point two.
That's not an ongoing cost.
Okay, and that's why I want to know what the ongoing cost is. So I know what I'm agreeing to as far as the levy is concerned.
Yeah, this is because this isn't an ongoing because again, this nine five six, even if you didn't listen to me. And kept going as is. You would still have a pretty big cost here because there are some that are maxed out, but like an HHS, they're not. You're still gonna have to pay them. That cost is still gonna be there. There's still an implementation cost to get them on the grid. And then here is, do you give them an anniversary step? Do you not? To your point, I would say it's almost like buying a house. You have to put a down payment on. This is your down payment that gets it onto the grid. The implementation cost, your mortgage payment is gonna be what the cost will be every year, what will process and that's where we can help you. Figure that out, what the difference would be if it's, you know, and then you can say, okay, that makes sense or yes. Because you have already in your budget, I'm assuming what you would pay in twenty twenty four. If nothing was done, because you're doing budget documents already. So we just have to know from this. If we implement, where does that put everyone? So then on December or January first, what does that look like?
Because the three percent will be the same. People will still have steps that are the same. It's just that some people will have steps that didn't before. So there is going to be a a cost.
Right, because the base has moved.
Yep.
Mr. Zorn has something to say?
Yeah, for the HHS cost, all that isn't gonna be levy money because we're gonna be able to draw down some federal money from many of our. Staff that participated in federal programs. So that's not gonna be all the money for HHS.
That's the payroll cost. That doesn't account for any revenue. What Mike's talking about is the revenue they can generate. Through HHS to cover because now they're paid at a different level.
For sure.
And and we do have a fund balance. So and um, as far as that, the bigger number on that sheet. Um, you you know, once once you guys answered question one and then not everybody's gonna be paid to get on the. On the uh, general adjustment to get on it twice, that number is gonna come way down.
All right. Do we have consensus that we want everyone to move on to the pay grid? I think that's.
Yeah, I think I think you had it within the grid.
Not positive, but if you guys vote for it, that's all. All right, then that's what we're at.
You're just giving me direction because then you can say. Here's the cost. Okay. Perfect. Even if it gets them on one full year, maybe two, you have a cost and then it drops off. So it's really, then you can kind of budget. What that additional cost would be to the county.
All right, and the third question.
Well.
That's all three.
That was all three.
But I would say there's a fourth and that's the anniversary date.
Yeah.
Just that would help me know. Instead of continuing to say we have this option and this, just to say, here's what the board's direction is. This is everything in twenty twenty three. Cost now twenty twenty four, where would it be to where you would have gone, done nothing with DDA?
What did we do on the others when we moved them up?
If they deserved a step, they got it. So I don't know. I would want to do anything different.
Right. I think you have to treat everybody the same.
And what that means is it's only for the people that would have a step after July first. So if. If Commissioner Flanders had one in March, she's not gonna go on and get another step. She has to wait until March to get her step.
Right, okay.
It would only, yeah, okay. I just want to make sure that's clear that not everyone's moving to.
Just so, just to be clear, you're not on the scale. As we're at the very, we're ten dollars or something under the scale. Not complaining, just a point.
Reminding me where we were. Where we sit. All right. I'm I know sorry to think that I fully understand the without anniversary dates, with anniversary dates, but maybe not. So could you just explain that?
Yep, I'm just gonna use, I'm gonna use you and Scott as an example. If we move, I'm just gonna go back and. If we move you both onto the grid, we move you on to a step. If Scott's anniversary date was January fifteenth, he already received his step. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
So he wouldn't get an like on another one. If yours was September first, you would go on July first and then on September. You would move to the next step, like in a.
Performance, so.
Yeah. And you are an overperformer. We know that. Was a dig there. I think it was a.
Okay.
Still need to look at it for planning, because I think we've received recommendation that we do not implement this until the first of the year because of each.
All right, can you answer that?
I'm sorry, say that again. I didn't hear you.
What it mentioned is that they're they're, and that's not a reason to not do it. We just need to know that it's it's possible in some of the positions where, say, we have. We have uh, ten people that we, there could be leapfrogging issues um, when someone gets the step afterwards. So. Literally, we what we have to do is get consensus on this other stuff. HR will have to go through those positions where we have multiple incumbents and see if there's leapfrogging issues. Every time you do anything with faculty, there will be a couple of leapfrogging issues. It's not that we can't overcome it. So.
I believe your recommendation to us was just to implement it January first.
No.
To simplify things.
Not necessarily a a recommendation, just that I just want people to know that we, when you do these things, especially mid-year, there are leapfrogging issues. And I don't know that there are, but there usually are.
I.
But it's not a reason not to do it.
My opinion is these people waited for a long time to get on the new, on a different pay scale. And I would want to do it now and get it over with. To get, take care of all those issues and get. So when we get to the end of the year, it's not this and all of open enrollment and all of everything at once. To.
The whole goal is if you can get everyone to one grid, you'll never have this pain again because you just recalibrate the grid. And everyone is on the grid, they're moving. Right now, you're literally, I'm gonna say HHS has. Seven different pay grids. You had an old pay grid, you had the eighty seven ninety one. So you have, I'm just gonna say. Ten grids coming into one. There's going to be pain. And not everyone will come and say, thank you for doing this. But without it, we would be in a way worse place. I think that's the thing to remember is that we're trying to make. Baby steps to get us to where we want to be. And like you said, ongoing maintenance continues to look at that. So.
Right.
You'll never have to see me six times in a year.
Can you give me the pros and cons of us doing it July first versus January first?
I would just say the pro of doing it is they've waited. So you, by doing it and not including everyone, they've waited for this. So that's the pro and that would be the con if you wait until July first, even if you, or January first, even if you. Did it January first, you're still gonna have these little nuances that are created just because. You're asking me to undo past HR practices of how people were hired. And that's where it gets messy because Scott and I could be hired two days apart. Do you know what I mean? And it could cause a compression then how people go in and all of that. So um.
Well, from that perspective, at least in my mind, it seems like it would be simpler to start January first. That's why I'm trying to find out.
You're still gonna have it. I would, the benefit of doing it now is you pay for the implementation cost, then you can compare apples to apples in twenty twenty four. This will be the new cost with the grid. This would have been the old payroll cost without moving. Then you can compare apples to apples because if you wait until twenty twenty four, you still have that implementation cost. So you can't compare until twenty twenty five, what it actually costs the county. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And you have the funding, so I would say. Do it. People are anxiously awaiting. Do it. I don't see a a pro of waiting until January first. Because everyone else is doing it now. Or preparing to, so.
Okay. So how does the board feel about that?
Well, my biggest issue is still not knowing what the cost is. Other than two different plans. That's my biggest.
Yep. And we'll get that. I mean, we know we have this money here. So now you just need to know what will twenty twenty four look like with the direction the board gives. With DDA's recommendation versus the county's old systems.
And and the largest cost has already been agreed to.
Yep.
We've already agreed.
But if it's an average of three percent um.
It won't be an average of three percent because it'll be three percent plus about half the people getting established.
No, I understand this, but the steps are already kind of like what I'm looking at last year. See what the steps amounted to and what the three percent, then the three percent this year for the entire um. Employees was nine hundred and sixty five thousand dollars.
Yeah, so it'll be more than that number for the three percent and the step number would probably be just a slight bit less.
So I think what we're saying is with no cola involved. Then just switching to this pay grid next year will be about a million dollars more.
Is that what the steps were?
Well, the steps last, no, the steps were five eighty one, nine sixty two, and the three percent was nine sixty five.
Yeah, so your your steps will be about the same, the.
Five eighty one.
The general adjustment, uh, because it's, it was a three last year and a three this year, because it's not a bigger number. It'll be slightly bigger.
But we'll get all those details.
It might be, it might be three percent of three hundred thousand. When you get all said and done, it's not three percent of nine hundred thousand, might be three hundred, might be four hundred, maybe three percent of that added to that.
After we, after she does this, so we can get closer on that.
Yeah, so on. No, that's.
But it could be that this is the only thing we can afford to do.
Right, right.
And nothing else is gonna happen but get everybody on here.
That's why I've kind of wanted some of the budgets so we understood where we were coming from. And now with the increasing of some funds coming in. Are we gonna use that to try to pay down the levy sum and reduce property taxes? Or are we gonna do something else with that? Or at least not raising.
Well, but yes, but and that's a budget discussion. I don't want to get into budget, but. You have to be careful when you get, you gotta be careful when you get new money if you. Just use it to reduce levy and then it's gone. Because some of this is, some of this is, some of it's not maybe ongoing. Some of it's just one time stuff. So you have to be really careful not to use that for operational. Because if you use it for operational and then it disappears, now you gotta come up with it. So you have to levy five hundred thousand dollars this year and say, great, we cut it five hundred thousand. And now next year, because it's gone, we have to raise it a million. So you have to, the whole goal is to keep it left.
Part of the discussion, but I think of that like two point five million, I think one point two about look like it would be ongoing funds. That's what it looked to me. And then depending on what we do with the real estate tax, that could be another. And so um, so I think there's some one time money that's clearly there. But there's some, and of course, a new legislature can do something entirely different and.
But it's exactly right.
Yeah, but that's what.
And we have to understand the strings attached to some of these.
Yes.
Because there might be strings attached. So we. You know, as as, yeah. Well, as I said yesterday, or uh, Monday at the AMC district meeting. The Health Human Service Bill, nine hundred pages, came out like eight hours before they voted on it. And our policy analysts are still reading through, trying to get an understanding of all of it. And that's what, two weeks ago? So it'll take a while to unwind what was passed to know exactly how it's gonna affect us. But yes, county program aid is pretty solid. The money for probation is pretty solid. Some of those other ones are pretty solid, but. We really need to. I think we need to get to mid-year point as usual to know what our costs, what has inflation affected our costs? In in our budget before we start trying to budget without knowing what. Inflation has done to us.
But but I agree with Linda's point that this might be the main thing we get to do. And there might be other things that people want that we won't be.
Yeah, that's that.
That I think that's quite awesome.
So what what timeframe wise, if this can be implemented July one, if we get through this next step. Is it, is it the next board meeting?
I don't know when your board meeting is.
It would be uh.
The next one.
June twenty. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Tomorrow, Noah.
Don't worry.
June uh, June twentieth is our next one. And I think, I I don't know that we need a two hour committee hall, but I mean, they might need a half hour and then and then present it board. And actually, um, the part of this need to action needs to take place both the county board and at HHS board. There's a separate governing board.
I'm not there.
So that's to be voted on at both boards?
Yes, because one of your decisions, when you uh, decide to go to this, you're gonna also have to have a uh, a transition off of merit. Um, and that has to be, it's a vote and they have to have a whole plan on how you're gonna do there. So which. There's people that are much more versed at this and I am as far as that, but that would be a separate vote that that has to take. Place in HHS in it. And one of your steps in the plan can be that we're moving to one county pay scale.
Is there, is there a way? And that, not to, not to muddy the waters, that we could not, I mean, have the board meeting and have HHS, but have a. A meeting the next week to get through it all? Or is that?
We can vote on it then, can we?
Huh?
We can't vote on it or are you saying vote on it a week later? At a special meeting?
Yeah.
Special meeting for what?
To just implement it.
As opposed to the board meeting? If we have a committee of the whole prior to get the information out?
We can. I hopefully I can be online at that meeting, but I might not be.
And and what will?
I can't guarantee.
The pandemic has ended, you'll have to, we'll have a, have to have a physical address where you're at and all the votes have to be rolled off.
Is it possible to vote on it after July, but have it?
You could always have it retroactive, but I it'll guarantee that there's back pay. Which is.
And it really goes into effect July eighth.
It's July eighth is what.
That gives you seven more days because that's when payroll and, do you know what I mean? Payroll doesn't start on July first. It actually starts on July eighth.
Right, I'm trying to figure out when we can have our commissioner there though.
Sure.
Well, and I think you thought. I think that you suggested that better to do it on a quarter too. So we could do it July eighth or October fifth or whatever.
Yeah, if you changed it. But you could always, I mean, to get it on board.
And then they might know what that cost.
Yeah, well, then the challenges and I'm the challenge. I understand that.
And even if you either.
Eight and a half years.
And you had to pick this one.
Obviously, you guys just delayed this long. Um, so well, we'll work about the mechanics of it um.
I mean, we could have a separate meeting, but to me, it sounds like we have pretty good board consensus. And Todd's Todd's been supportive the whole way too, so.
Well, I just think we have to get through this process and we have to get everybody on board and and move that forward. I just think. Holding it up, holding it up any longer is.
That that day, I I don't know what the committee of the whole schedule is, but we'd we'd have a committee of the whole, hopefully before the meeting. Um, and then you at the board meeting, uh, which would this one would be a nine. Hopefully you just have a brief presentation and then HHS would be at ten thirty that day.
Okay. I would not be able to be here in person because I have a meeting at nine o'clock.
That's right.
So.
I like that.
These meetings, though, being able to come under thirty thirty minutes.
Well, now we have directions. We're not making decisions. All you literally have to do is say, this is what it will cost. Is it, is it palpable to our budget in twenty twenty four?
Yeah, I I don't, I don't think it's gonna be that that big a deal.
I'm not presenting anything. I'm just giving you the cost.
With the two, with the two consensuses you gave her today, she's only gonna have to tweak option one a little bit.
Unless it costs too much.
Well, right, and I can always come back.
That that would be after, you'd have to tell her that later, but it's gonna cost less than that. So I don't know how it would be too much.
Maybe it won't be.
It'll, the number will be less, so.
Schedule a special meeting?
Oh, well, we have.
You know, we got it already set and structured with a plan. It's fine. Brad's gonna be gone. He's gonna be gone. If he attends, he attends. We got the consensus. I'm not sure what the big concern is. If you're concerned that he's fit and you're concerned that it's not gonna pass, then. You just gotta make that decision, so.
If it's not gonna pass, you guys can table it and do it later.
Yep.
Okay.
We're here the twenty seventh for uh, board equalization, right? Yep.
That was the twenty sixth.
It'll be.
You're in Cannon Falls on the twenty-seventh.
Oh, CED's deal, yeah. It'll work, we'll get through it.
We're literally this close, so.
Thank you for all your work on that.
We're close. And it always can be tweaked more, but every time we meet, we get a little bit closer and comfort zone hopefully increases as.
That we have to, we need to get through this. Yes.
Well, hopefully you feel more comfortable. We've had multiple conversations, we've done multiple options.
Few years from now, I understand.
So my orders from the board is we will work on a July eighth implementation cost that will, um, provide three percent and into the grid for HHS eighty-seven through ninety-one. Other, the rest of the employees would move on to the grid, no three percent adjustment. All would be in the grid, so on an actual step minimum or maximum. And if you would have gotten a anniversary.
And now, and believing we head in this direction and we figure out a way to get this passed, then we will, moving forward, have one pay grid. The golden standard.
Well, the unions have to just continue.
The unions do have to agree to that part of it too. I believe they will.
All right. We're good? Not great, but good. Okay. Anything else, or is that it?
That is it.
All right.
Thank you.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.